Good evening and welcome to the November 13, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham, and this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, both remote and in person. I'll read you a few notes on that in just a moment. Please also note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. Also, I need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It's all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify the Chair. I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so we'll go forward. So pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A 20 until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it's in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, and the conference ID number is 570-947-053. You may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that is in the agenda that's posted on the town website. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, formerly Chatham, the Channel 18, I'm sorry, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So we'll begin with the roll call of board members. Bob Wirtshafter.
Bob Wirtshafter, present.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, present.
Bob Dubis.
Present.
Megan Story is not present. This is Catherine Halpern. I am also present. And I'll also ask if there are any board members that need to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda. All right, so that's, yes, Bob Dubis.
I might have to recuse myself. My son works for the restaurant group that's going to come before us.
Okay, um, so for 859 Main Street?
Yes.
Yes. I'm not sure if you have to.
I don't have any monetary.
Yes, you want benefit financially.
He just happens to work for him.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's required, but if you'd like to, sometimes for safety's sake, do that.
Is this a formal? Is this going to be a formal?
Yeah, this is a formal site plan.
I think probably then I should step out.
All right, that's fine. Yes, Mr. Riley.
We have no objection to Mr. Dewar's sits.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So it's your decision.
I'll stay. Nobody has any problems with it.
I don't think in this case it would be required, and I'll just nod at Ryan to confirm or deny that. To ask, I'm just asking Ryan's opinion as well.
I'm not sure if you can see me or if you can hear me, but I would agree that there's.
It's not required.
No conflict.
Okay, thank you. All right, great. All right, so the first item on the agenda is the minutes from the October 23 meeting. Are there any corrections or additions? Warren.
Madam Chair, and I believe that on page two, second to the last line, second to the last word is missing. I think the word can.
As far as it can legally, yes. Can or may or something like that.
Or whatever.
Yeah, can is good. Any other additions, corrections, amendments to the minutes from October 23? If there are none, could I have a motion? Yes.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the October 23, 2023 meeting minutes with the correction as noted.
Thank you so much. Can I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Thank you. Bob Dubis, do you approve? We're voting. I'll start at this end.
At least I was awake. Yes, I do approve.
All right, Charlene Greenholt.
Yes.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
And Bob Wirtshafter.
Bob Wirtshafter, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. And I'll just note that Megan Story was also absent from that meeting, so she isn't, and she's not here, so her vote is not required. Great. So next item on the agenda is the Planner's Report, and I would like to introduce Ryan Kristenberry, our principal planner, who's joined us remotely. Ryan, please go ahead with your report.
Hi, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be with you in person tonight. Just a quick update on staff efforts relative to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning amendment. We are finalizing the inclusionary language for your next meeting, as well as introducing some language we've had confirmed by Town Council about requirements for year-round dwelling units. That's encouraging. I'm working on an LCP consistency page that really outlines a lot of the implementation efforts of the LCP that this board has done over the years. And so I look forward to presenting that as a fact sheet, and then we'll get in a little bit to some high-level build-out discussions at that next meeting. So lots to talk about, but I think we're on track for meeting your expected deadline of December 11 to consider a recommendation on this article, potential article.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ryan. Next item on our agenda is a certificate of compliance. And Ryan, were you going to present on this, or is Mr. Litchfield present? Did you want to present?
Sure, I was going to just deliver an oral report on this. I have shared with you the documents that Attorney Litchfield provided relative to this request. I consider these housekeeping amendments. This is a site plan, statement of conditions that was recorded. You know, more than 20 years ago, there was a subsequent, there was a bond that was a part of those conditions. The site improvements were completed, inspected, and the bond was released. This is just a document that's been sort of outstanding at the registry, and the release request is sought now for title purposes and to facilitate a realistic transfer.
Okay, great. And Mr. Litchfield, did you have anything to add?
I have very little to add. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the prospective buyer. When doing the title, as Ryan said, we found an outstanding definitive of, or statement of conditions, which is not terribly unusual, but this one says that "prior to occupancy of the site for its intended purposes, a representative of the Planning Board shall inspect the property while it's been occupied for more than two decades." So nothing less like to clean it up.
Right. Okay, great. So we would just vote to release the statement of conditions. Any comments from the board? I think this is very old. This is from when? 2001, correct? So then may I have a motion that the board approves and releases the statement of conditions?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the release of statement of conditions for 265 Commerce Park North.
Great, thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
A second.
Roll call vote. Bob Wirtshafter.
This way this time?
I'll start this side.
Bob Wirtshafter, approve.
Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenholt.
Charlene Greenholt, approve.
Bob Dubis.
Bob Dubis, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you very much.
Yes. All right. Next item on our agenda is a request for a zoning bylaw amendment, a proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and I think that regarding the Conservancy District special permit uses, and I think Thad Eldridge will present his request. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Eldridge, he's Southeast. I've been before you many times with driveway changes within the Conservancy District, and in many of those cases, we've added some sort of stormwater feature. The last one was over on Clamshell, where we took a landscape mound and inverted it so that the stormwater would have a place to go. I've given.
You gotta get closer to the mic, please.
Sure.
Thad, you gotta get closer to the mic, please. Thank you.
Excellent. So yes, I've been before you with many of those driveways. We've done our best to have some sort of stormwater feature in each one of them. I've also provided a list of projects that have been done, and these are certainly not all the projects that have been done, but many of them are by the town. Abisagami Run was a flagship project that the town did. Technically speaking, none of these are permitted under the bylaw. We're allowed to put sewer pipe, gas pipe, but not storm pipe, drainage pipe, within the Conservancy District, and I would like to remedy that so that we can start putting stormwater systems into primarily the floodplain. I don't see stormwater systems really going into the wetlands, which were the original Conservancy Districts. It's when we expanded to the floodplain that we did not add this. That's obviously been ignored for many years, and these projects have been allowed. I've suggested that we treat it just like driveways, zoning board of appeals, planning board, conservation review. Conservation would have to review it regardless because it's in the floodplain. Since many of these would be associated with a driveway that's going before the three boards anyhow, it made sense just to mimic that language and say, hey, let's put in stormwater. I did put a reference to the stormwater management standards, which should be adhered to when working so close to a wetland. And if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. I just want to remind the board that what's being proposed here is that is proposing to introduce a petition to Annual Town Meeting 2024, correct?
Yeah.
That would be a bylaw amendment. He has offered that if the Planning Board is not willing to sponsor this petition for a zoning bylaw amendment, that he would put it forth as a citizens' petition. And just to remind you that in that case, we still play a role. The Planning Board doesn't sponsor the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, but we would need to hold the public hearing. Thad would bring it forth as a citizens' petition. We would, we would go through the process, hold the public hearing, and we would either recommend or not recommend it to Annual Town Meeting. So, so I think the first issue to consider is whether the Planning Board wishes at this time to sponsor this petition. As usually, as your chair, I let you speak first, but I, I do feel I need to say this, that our plate is quite full at the moment.
It's understood.
And as Chair, I actually don't feel it's advisable for us to take it on to sponsor this proposed bylaw amendment. That's my opinion. I think our plate is quite full at the moment with everything we're doing for, particularly for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. But, so there's two issues. There's one, whether the Planning Board wants to take this on to sponsor it. Why don't we deal with that issue first, and then we'll deal with any other comments or issues regarding the matter. So comments from the board, questions for Thad? Yes, Bob.
I am for this, and I'm for it because as the tide rises and as the setbacks of the water coming in, and we keep moving and moving and moving, and we're building, and we still have to build, we still have to maintain what we have, that the direction of the stormwater management should go to all of it. Driveways, every part of this, as we control the runoff off the roof into catch basins or dry wells, and we're seeing more and more of the houses near the beach and the lowland coming before us, what are they supposed to do with the water? I mean, we, this at least gives us some idea to be able to prepare, or engineers like that, to prepare what they can do with it, or are you just going to leave a puddle? You know, it's kind of, it's, the town puts all of their water through systems where they can, and other times it just runs into the ocean, ponds, wherever. So at least this gives us a management cycle to deal with. So whether we sponsor it, or Thad sponsors it in a citizens' petition, is really here and there, because I think that, I think the board will, will go along with whatever comes by. At least, I'm hoping they will, because without it, our hands are tied in a lot of things that are going to come before us. Thad has one now that's a little troublesome, because there's no set rule on what to do with it. So I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Yeah, basically, when I suggest that maybe the board not take this on to sponsor, it's in terms of time management of the board's time. Yeah. Charlene, did you have comments?
Just, I'm trying to remember. You only need 10 signatures to get it on a regular town, an annual town meeting.
Correct.
You don't need a bazillion.
It's 100 if you want a special town meeting, and it's 10 if you want to be on the regular town.
Okay. The board will, as you said, has the opportunity and is required by law to hold the public hearing for this.
Exactly, yes.
And at the same time, we need to recommend or not this to the town meeting. So certainly, I'm totally supportive of this, but I certainly hear you. If it was cumbersome, and it was a special town meeting, and he needed 100, I think I'd rethink it. But whereas he only needs 10 signatures to get it on the ballot, or on the warrant, I think this board would be very supportive of this.
It would still go through essentially the same process that we would take it through, except that our role is not as hands-on, and we simply recommend or not recommend. Yeah. Warren.
Essentially, that was going to be my question. I thought the petition would get in front of this board anyway, so we'll have the obligation to support or not. I'm very much in favor of it. I have one just for my own education. Could you just review again why sewer pipes were not included with all of the other types of excavation, which is permitted in the area? How do we get into this place?
That was back in the 60s, 70s, and 80s.
I was going to say, I don't think he was born yet, so.
The Conservancy District was created first in 1966.
Yeah.
And it was really to protect wetlands, and there were 29 or 30 of them that were protected. That worked out so well. Then in 1979, they expanded to every wetland in Chatham. And there were certain things you could put in, you know, utilities. Those areas usually don't have stormwater. And then when we adopted the floodplain as part of the Conservancy District, I don't think anybody looked at it and said, hey, what are we going to do with the stormwater in what is really upland, but it's still Conservancy District?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm very supportive of it, so, but thank you for that.
Okay. Arthur, do you want to go ahead?
I'm a supporter of stormwater management, as you know, Thad. I think my concern here is this is moving into single-family residential lots. I am not a strong advocate of Planning Board putting their toe in the water associated with this. We typically deal with subdivisions, lots created by a subdivision on a road, site plans for commercial and business, residential if it's in a commercial district for multi-family and that. This, this opens up a whole different avenue. It's common for a town to have their local officials, or a civil engineer who they may have on staff, review something like this. I mean, but this is asking for a role to be expanded by the Planning Board. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I mean, right now, if you take a look at our role and what it says, looking at a driveway, and if you put the driveway on existing grade and you're making it pervious, really, and you're keeping it to minimalist as possible, really don't have to worry about a lot of activity on our part here. This requires a little bit more involvement, and that's, that's my concern, is the expansion in that area. All for stormwater management, though. But then, then you got to look into what kind, what you should be doing, how should it be applied, to what degree, what kind of stormer then are you going to be talking about in this? None of that is in here, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. I'm an engineer, I'm a detail guy, and if I don't have that information, how do I make an assessment? So, yeah, I just don't think you can just put your toe in the water a little bit on this. I think you got to go all the way, and I think the best place is if the town had a civil engineer on staff, or in a consulting role, that they could pick this up. I think that that's something that's warranted throughout all residentials, as a matter of fact, because we've had some issues in town. And the only way to resolve that is, is not necessarily get other boards involved, but perhaps do this through, through the town's, town's officials. But I'm for stormwater management, though. So if it comes before us, I'm not going to be fighting it. I'm going to just try to figure out how to not necessarily grow our role so big so that we'll be spending all our time just doing these.
And if I may, the project that brought me here, at the end of Christopher Harding Lane, we're looking at redevelopment project. The runoff from the High Point Christopher Harding Lane all the way down, it goes through one shallow puddle, and over a driveway, and then basically right into a wetland. There's mitigation that's going to be needed for conservation, and it's a perfect opportunity to put in, you know, a rain garden, and just to be able to treat something. It may not meet full standard that would be required under commercial. It's more of a redevelopment situation under the Stormwater Handbook, where it's the maximum extent practical. Will that take care of everything? No, just putting the one forbay in there, but it would improve the situation, and I can't even design for that.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I, I'm sort of close to Arthur's position. My feeling is that we were, we've at least talked about a whole redefinition and application for a stormwater bylaw, and I just think that that's where we should be dealing with this, as in a more comprehensive way, rather than just this fixing this one little issue, because there are plenty of issues in stormwater that we need to address. And I would, I would prefer that we actually do that, and as part of Conservation, the Climate Action Committee, and, and I do think there's a site plan issue here that, and you have the expertise, so I do think we have a role. So my, my preference is if we're going to spend any time on it, it should be more comprehensive. That doesn't stop you from putting this through and having it come before us, but I think we have an obligation to be more thorough and.
And I did mention that in the letter, that that's a much larger conversation, and I can say on behalf of many of the surveyors and engineers out there, Brewster passed one, and most of us don't work there because of it. And in fact, there are two.
Can you speak up, Thad?
Oh, I'm sorry. Brewster passed a very comprehensive stormwater bylaw, and many of us don't work there because of it. It's incredibly onerous for the homeowners, so, and it's my understanding that they're going to be bringing that back to revise it down because it's been so cumbersome, so.
And I agree with you on that, and that's why I'm very cautious about the Planning Board getting involved with a lot-by-lot residential stormwater review. That's, and you know, this, this is only in the Conservancy District. However, there's been plenty of them that we see. Every year, they come before us, and I'm a little bit concerned about that. That's, that's my only.
And the intent here was really.
I have no issue with micromanaging anybody's design. I mean, that's, that's, that's fine to do, but I really think that we have to be cautious about this, how far we, we step into it.
And really, this was to mimic the driveways that you already review. And in most cases, the driveways would be coming with a stormwater component.
Okay. Other comments? So as I mentioned, I think tonight, unless we as a board decide that we want to take it on and sponsor it, which means we are directly involved in the drafting of the proposed bylaw amendment, et cetera, et cetera, my sense of the board, again, as your chair, I don't recommend we take this on simply because of time management. And. And then our decision would be, I don't even know if, do we need to do a formal vote? Thad would be free to go ahead and do a citizens petition, and by process, that would come before us, yeah. And I don't think we need to do a formal vote for that. We would simply want to, but what we might want to do is take a vote, does the board wish to take this on to actively sponsor it? Which means we would do the drafting, and we would do all of the kind of hands-on work in the process.
Madam Chair, I don't think we need a formal vote. I think it's more a consensus of the board that, you know, the board is not going to sponsor this.
Yeah, yes. Do I have any board members who object to that course of action at this point? Again, as your chair, that's what I've recommended, simply for reasons of time management. So Thad, I think that's how we'll proceed, that it would be up to you to prepare the citizens petition. What I'm hearing from some board members, and what I'd like to express is just the level of attention to detail that you may be required to give to the drafting of a proposed bylaw amendment. We want to avoid any unintended consequences. That's a big thing. So you certainly have the expertise to work that in, that's what I would suggest. And you've heard some of the concerns of the other board members. But that's something that I think will be vetted when it goes through the process and it comes before the board, and we hold the public hearing and so on. Does that make, is that all right?
It sounds great.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, other comments?
Chairman, I'd like to ask a couple more questions.
Sure, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Does this town have any stormwater management program now? Just through the site plan review. Say that again? Just through the site plan review, I mean. So do we have no formal, formal way to get rid of our wastewater, other than what an engineer designs, and puts into practice, and off it goes? I mean, when you have a subdivision plan, when you have a formal site plan review, then stormwater is dealt with. But I'm thinking more of the wetlands, okay? There's no formal plan to deal with the water in the wetlands, other than what we see at Afscamy Way, and we see at Oyster Pond, and stuff like that. So there's no, other than if an engineer designs it, everybody thinks it's good, that's it. So we have no small, small plan to handle the stormwater. And I'm not, I'm not thinking of having a multimillion-dollar plan to deal with stormwater. This is for the average, the average household, the average building that's in a wetland conservatory, to be able to say, okay, instead of having this big mud puddle here, I'd like to move it over here and use it as a rain garden, or put it over here and let it evaporate, or some kind of plan like that to be able to move the puddle around. I'll call it a puddle, but basically is what it's gonna be. Where the water comes down, it goes here, and I'd like to move it over here. And you can't do that, correct? Correct. We're not allowed to regrade within the conservancy.
I'm not opposed to that, but.
No, no, but you understand that the.
It says "planning board," that's my, that's my low concern.
But something, something that would be adequate for the rainwater, say. Not stormwater, just rainwater, to be able to say, look, I'd like to put it over here to get it out of my way so I can get out of my car. You know, not a book about this thick, you know? Something maybe about this thick, you know? All right? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I just, I agree. And now I hear that one town tried to do it, and it was a lot more complicated than we thought. And it needs to be done again, so I think this really requires a lot more thought than just, you know, submitting a citizens petition. But I think this does address one component of our bigger problem. I don't want us to.
No, but I'm just saying that we know we're gonna have problems down the road. This is just the basic, okay, we need to move six inches of dirt over here and put a foot of dirt over here to move the water over there. Not just so that, and do it without somebody saying, you're filling the wetland, you're doing this, you're doing that. It's not, it's just a, some way to get by without going through three lawyers, you know? But you understand, you understand what I'm saying. So something simple, stupid, that can benefit the people down on Little Beach and wherever, in North Chatham, whoever needs it.
Actually, Ryan, did you wanna comment?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Riley, before you go ahead, I just wanted to see if Ryan wanted to make a comment.
No, Bill, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I support the suggestion. And I agree with Art, you guys are way too much involved in this, and you shouldn't be. So, right now, our building inspector interprets the bylaw that you can't change the grades at all, anywhere in the floodplain. When the driveway comes to you.
That's correct.
Under a misbegotten bylaw that Ryan had the pleasure of drafting with a previous town planner. What you guys say is, well, just make sure the water can flow over it. And so what Thad is suggesting is to be able to do some excavation or add material to control the groundwater, the stormwater, on a single property. Very simple process. You guys don't have to be involved. In fact, I think we agree you shouldn't be involved. Leave it to the Conservation Commission and the engineers. So I think the only change he has to make in this is remove your approval of it, and then we're good to go.
Again, I think, how to put this? I agree that the building commissioner's interpretation of the bylaw is correct at this time. My humble opinion. Basically, what, we don't need to decide the details tonight. I think Thad will draft the bylaw, proposed bylaw amendment, and come before us, and we'll hold the public hearing. And at that time, we can have substantive discussions about what should or should not be included.
And based on the conversation tonight, I'm ready to change some of the wording in here, take the planning board out of it, take the zoning board out. We can put this under the general permitted uses. I was nervous about going that far initially because this is a step.
Yeah. That opinion's been expressed by a couple of board members. I don't know that the whole board agrees with that approach. So I think it's something that would need to be considered.
All righty.
And certainly, I would just say with your experience with the bylaw, as you mentioned in Brewster, that you as an engineer have found difficult to work with, that might be helpful experience in drafting something that will be more workable. So that's what I think we'd wanna ask you to do. Yes, Charlene?
Just, I was actually in Brewster, serving as their interim town planner, when that was getting towards the end of it, and I went, holy Moses. The bylaw is so strict, it goes down to every single parcel if they're doing a certain thing. And that is not what, in my opinion, should have been intended, and I questioned it then. They had already approved it. So it does not surprise me they're going back, because they're realizing that, wow, this is way, way, way too much. Because it literally, it hurt almost every property owner.
Okay, good. All right. Yes, Bob?
I will say, and because it hasn't been mentioned, but there's a hesitancy on my part to agree to include this because in some ways, it softens our restrictions on what can be done in those areas. And I don't have enough familiarity with what the wording is in your document, but I do think that you will hear concerns from people about why are we making this easier to do when the intention was to not allow development there? So you go ahead and make it and put it in, but I do think you're gonna have to answer that question.
I'll do my best to.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Obvious, great. So I think you've heard from us, and we'll hear back from you, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, sounds good.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ted. All right, the next item on our agenda is a formal site plan review. And this is for eight fifty-nine Main Street, Chatham Greens and Rotisserie Restaurant. And this is a revitalization of the old Cumberland Farms property. You have been before us, we're preliminary, now back for the formal. And I will ask you to introduce yourselves, and please go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Bill Riley, on behalf of the applicant. I'm with Joe Fournier, who is our design person, and Dave Clark, who is our professional engineer, who's done the stormwater drainage calculations and design on this property. So I'm gonna let Joe introduce the project, and then Dave will explain his work. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Joe Fournier, JFF Design Architects. Just getting happy to be back in front of you again, after navigating some of the other waters that we have on this project, and hopefully this is our last chapter towards moving forward. As you're all aware, we're proposing to establish a one-hundred-and-one-seat restaurant, both indoor and outdoor seating. We're looking to improve the lot itself by increasing our green space by some forty-six percent from what exists. And obviously, Mr. Clark will speak towards the traverse of the lot itself, and how we were able to work with the town DPW and also MassDOT with respect to the locations of our drives in and out. And really, I think that's more than enough that I can say, and just have Mr. Clark take over from here.
Thank you.
Good evening, David Clark, Clark Engineering, on behalf of the applicants. So when we were here for the preliminary, of course, because it was a preliminary, there was not a lot of information on the plans, and the planning board had a lot of questions and wanted numerous things resolved before we came back. So I'll start with the layout of the parking lot. We're keeping the Easterly service entrance into the CVS Chatham Village Market parking lot. That's basically remaining unaltered. Thank you. If I can figure this out, yeah. So there's the Easterly entrance. Then out on Route twenty-eight Main Street, this curb cut will be reconfigured, so it's exit-only. And on the west end, that'll be modified to meet DOT standards for the width and the radiuses. The interior parking lot has been laid out to give us a twenty-four-foot-wide alley, both on the side and in front of the building. That allows for a double-loaded parking area. It's actually less pavement than what's there now. Over on the east side, there's only enough room for a single-loaded, and that provides, it also provides enough room for service vehicles and deliveries to this side of the building. Three parking spaces up in this corner will remain and would just be reconfigured, regraded, and paved. That's it for the, and out on Route twenty-eight, we're proposing a new sidewalk right along the edge of the highway layout. There's a grass strip in between the sidewalk and the highway layout. Similarly, down this end, doing the same thing. So all the work within the state highway layout is per DOT. That's not something we came up with. We sent a twenty-five percent design to DOT. They responded with details on how they wanted the entire stretch in front of this property to be redone, which is sidewalk, ADA ramps at each crossing, and also rebuilding the ADA ramp at the lights. A portion of it is just beyond our property line, but they wanted us to redo that, too. So I'm gonna move on to stormwater. Right now, there are, there's one catch basin here, one catch basin here, and there's one that we couldn't find that's under almost a foot of leaf litter and dirt. So I imagine that has failed. These seem to be working, but because the parking lot's all broken up from the removal of the gas tanks and the islands, they don't receive much stormwater at all now, so we're presuming that they need to be replaced. So what we're proposing, there's two fourteen-inch-wide trench drains at the two entrances. The parking, this corner, the parking, the stormwater, the high point's right about here. And stormwater goes in that direction to the southwest, and then the rest of it heads to there. And then this side, there's a high point somewhere right about here, and all this stormwater goes to that catch basin. And so we're keeping this grading pretty much the same here on this back corner, because there's a wetland off property on the other side of Snow Lane. We're gonna raise the grade here a foot and a half or so, so it all pitches out towards Route twenty-eight. So there's no chance of stormwater leaving the site and heading to that wetland. So from the trench drains, goes into a manhole, second manhole, and the two manholes act as settling basins before being discharged to a substantially improved leach field here, and a similar leach field here. There's a little bit of area that we can't regrade, so we're putting a standard catch basin and a leach pit here. Overall, the site, we'll be reducing site coverage, as shown on the site plan, with the site coverage. Basically, all this pavement from here, this narrow strip here, all this pavement's going, and that pavement's going. This is the easement that CVS holds to access their drive-through, that needs to stay. But we're also removing a little bit of pavement here. The drainage system has been designed in accordance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Policy because this is a commercial site, and we had to file a notice of intent with conservation. It's a redevelopment, but I don't, and under a redevelopment, under the Massachusetts Stormwater Policy, basically it says that you need to do the best you can to conform to all their standards. I believe we comply with all the standards. We're capturing, pursuant to the local bylaw, we're capturing and infiltrating a twenty-five-year storm event. These drainage structures will certainly handle a fifty-year storm event and almost a hundred-year storm event. So vastly improving the on-property stormwater controls to keep it out of Route twenty-eight. State also required, although it's difficult to grade, and the paving contractor is gonna not be happy with me, but they want a high point between the site and the highway so that the gutter line is maintained to keep Route twenty-eight stormwater on Route twenty-eight. So it would have been nice just to kinda keep the grades that are there, but the state wanted to ensure that their water stayed on their property and our water stayed on our property. So it's gonna be a little bit of finesse by the excavation contractor and the paving contractor to set these things on the money so that everybody's happy when the project's done. We also show a new sewer connection system. Basically, grease trap and manholes to get the wastewater out of the kitchen into the grease trap, and then the. and then the domestic wastewater out of the bathrooms down and out to the street, to the municipal sewer. That's it on the stormwater. We'd mentioned all the parking spaces. They all conform to the Town of Chatham regulations. We show the ADA compliant spaces in the front. All the mechanical systems are gonna be behind the building, within an enclosure, so that even though it's at the back of the building, and there's a, CVS property has a stockade fence, it's just double protection from getting those mechanical systems out of sight. These design plans have been sent back to DOT as a 75% plan. I don't foresee any substantial changes other than details that the state wanted. Some of the other details, before they go to 100% and issue a permit, they want to see the planning board's approval and conditions. They want to see the order conditions from Conservation Commission. So once we have those two documents, I believe we can go forward with 100% design application to DOT. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we go to questions, I just want to bring out a couple of points that are included in your staff report and some additional documents that we received just prior to the meeting. Staff report notes that the applicant received approval by Historic Business District Commission on July 5th for exterior lighting and building design. Also, staff notes that the board may wish to consider a reduction in the required number of parking spaces to allow for expansion of the green space. Let me see if there's other, yes. Also, the Board of Health requires that this project be connected to sewer, to Town Sewer. I think you have a copy of that memo in your packet. And then a couple of points that we just received from Rob Failey, our DPW director. He does discuss the both ingress and egress points, and there are some concerns. The alignment of the proposed driveways and the proposed path will need to be coordinated with the finalized plans of Mass DOT, so users of the path and vehicles entering, exiting the site can navigate the area without confusion and in a safe manner. The skewed easterly access is of primary concern with this new proposal. Again, I'm just quoting from some of the materials that you've been given, and let me see if there's others. I think those are the main points from the staff report and other comments. So let's go through and see if you have questions for the applicant or comments. Bob Witschfter?
No, I don't have any. I'm gonna wait and let, see what other people say, but I really don't have any.
Okay. How about Bob Dupus? Just thought I'd change the order once again. Your mic.
All right.
Yes.
Missing that today. I'm not a favorite of storm trench drains, which you know. If that's what you put out there, that's what you put out there. As long as they maintain them, all right.
Similar to catch basins, as long as they're maintained, they're all right. We would have to put in five or six catch basins in a row in order to get all the storm, because it's so flat at the entrances. So these aren't your standard residential, they're 14-inch wide, 19 inches deep. And that's why I also have two manholes for extra sediment trap.
Well, I think, I like the design. I know the exit, the exit on the east is gonna be touch and go. That's never been a really fine exit, but is there any consideration in when they redevelop that intersection?
Yes.
Is the state mandating, did the state design those exits?
I sent what you saw at the preliminary to the state with a little more details, but I really didn't change the configuration of either entrance. They came back with the sidewalk details and the rounding onto Queen Anne Road.
So they don't have a problem with it?
They didn't say anything negative about an exit only on the east side and two-way on the, they just want proper signage.
I like the idea of the exit only on that one. I would not want to take a right-hand turn on that, but I don't find anything problematic with the layout. I think it's a much better layout than what's there now.
Great. Charlie?
The only question I had, and it's only because it was brought up in the staff report, is, is there any way that the CVS property would allow for shared parking? I know that right behind this building and to the west of the CVS building, there's a whole parking lot there that is very underutilized.
The difficulty is potential liabilities. So they've been very good about working with us in consideration of, like letting us have a temporary access through the fence if a truck arrives late and stuff. But there's really no interest in, you know, us renting or getting an easement for their spaces. They prefer to leave it as it is, even though, as you say, it's underutilized.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask that question. Otherwise, I have no issues or other questions.
I just want to double-check that the access, however, on the east to the CVS parking lot, that's, on the plan, it looks like that's remaining open. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check that.
And that's two-way?
Currently, it is, yes. But we've spoken with the police, and in big traffic events like the Fourth of July.
Right, you mentioned that.
They know that they can close that off to keep people from trying to avoid the light.
Okay. Warren, did you have comments or questions?
Yeah, none of them terribly significant. I think this overall site plan is a dramatic improvement. I believe Ryan had in her comments one, which is, I think, just an oversight. On one of the site plans that is in the packet we got, it shows on the west side that there is a proposed "Do Not Enter" sign, which I think is probably not intended. It's not shown on the later site plan in the package, but just to mention it. I wanted to ask if the restaurant is going to be open year-round or seasonally?
Yes, it is.
That's the intent, yes.
It's what?
It's that's the intent, be year-round.
Year-round. And will the restaurant offer takeout service, or is it only for on-premises dining?
Both, both takeout and on-premises.
Okay.
It's a post-COVID era. People like takeout.
I agree completely. If it is takeout, as we had discussed in, for Max, you know, there perhaps ought to be some consideration for where people could park if they're just gonna go in and pick up stuff.
A designated takeout parking space, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's it. We had talked about that at the preliminary site plan review. And if they are intending to have takeout service, it does seem to me that some consideration might be warranted for where are people going to go. You don't want them to park out behind CVS and walk all the way around if, unless it's necessary. I don't have a bright answer to suggest that, but it does seem to me that it's a valid question if there's gonna be a takeout for any significant portion of the business there. It looks like it's about 50/50, or it's 56 outside and 44 seats inside, something like that. So through the wintertime, it'll only be about 44 seats, and there'd be plenty of parking available pretty much anywhere in town, so the issue would only be for if you want to come and do, pick up your takeout in August, you may not be able to. So if there's a place that you could set aside as dedicated for only that purpose, it does seem to me that if you can use the CVS parking as overflow in the summer, it might make sense to dedicate something that's right up front. The only way to get in is through the front door, I assume, so you'd have to go in the front door to pick up your takeout and get out. But that would be, I think, worth considering. We talked about that, as I said, in the preliminary. We also talked about bicycles. This is the part of town where there's gonna be a lot of bicycle traffic. Right up Old Croll Road, there's a bicycle shop. It's right on people that are heading down to the beach, down to Main Street, and I didn't see any bike racks on here. And it might warrant more than one and/or an additional place to just park your bike that is not in a parking space. Again, I don't have a strong recommendation on that, but it does seem to me there's gonna be a lot of bicycles, and they're gonna get in the way of the parking at the very least, and potentially even create a safety hazard if people are trying to get through the traffic, or the parking, or get to a parking lot, a space that's full of bicycles. Let's see, I also noticed, too, that you're gonna have, majority of the seats are outside, so certainly in the summer. I didn't see any location on there in the site plan for, let's get it, trash receptacles. Certainly, if it has takeout, people are gonna take out and eat there, and they'll probably have something to throw away at the end. And it doesn't seem that there's any convenient place to do it, and I don't know where that ought to be, but a lot of people aren't gonna go back inside to try and throw something away. And so that's something to at least consider, it seemed to me. And it also, also seems to be missing is any kind of service island outside, which is where the majority of the people would be, you know, a place where you put dishes and flatware and napkins and condiments and things like that, and/or even things that are being brought out or dirty dishes and stuff. Maybe they could be combined with a place to have trash for the patrons. Not sure. But it just seems something that is gonna be necessary, so maybe it ought to be thought about ahead of time, so you could put it on the site plan. The sidewalks appear to be designed such that they'll connect with the sidewalks on either side, but I just wanted to confirm that. Okay. The, where, a lot, let's talk about where the access is to the Chatham Village Market. It's not really a crosswalk, per se, but painted along that opening, there's a bright, you know, like six-foot-wide red stripe framed in white, which is essentially defining what I'll call a crosswalk across that space, and it goes right into the sidewalk. There's another one which goes across the entrance to the Town Market from Old Queen Anne Road. Same thing, big, huge, six-foot-wide red stripe framed in white. I would suggest it would be very useful, and certainly very, a safety feature, if along the sidewalks which are proposed here that cross the east and the west entrance and exits, that there be the same type of red stripe framed in red that would just, it's not a crosswalk, but it would be the same visual effect and continue what people are used to seeing in the Village Center. It seemed very effective.
We'd be happy to do that if DOT allows it. It's their property.
Oh, it's their property?
Yeah, it's their sidewalk. It will be, we'll pay for it, but it'll be their sidewalk.
Interesting. Well, I would still strongly recommend that as a safety feature, there be some, it's not technically a crosswalk, because there's no street, but it does seem to be very effective in the Village Market area to call attention to drivers that this is a place where people are walking. And certainly, those entrance and exits would seem to be the obvious place to also do that. Let's see, what else did I have to say here? Now, of lesser significance, while the, I love the landscape plan, it's terrific. I presume, since I saw that there is a well on the site, that it plans to have an irrigation system.
It is, actually. It's delineated on the plan, right there.
And, which is fabulous. I did note that, however, in order to put in that sidewalk, you're gonna have to take out like three trees, I think. One of them which was memorializing the nation's bicentennial. And I just, as a question for my own education, do you need a permission to chop down trees along there? And especially if they were memorializing the bicentennial. I don't have an answer to that, and I don't really have a problem with taking them down, but I called, just called attention to it, and if you need permission, do you have it?
Well, DOT is directing us to take the tree out, so.
Well, there you go. It's on their property, too?
Unfortunately.
So the town was planting trees on the state highway right-of-way. That's interesting. And that would be it, then? Is the delineation of the state highway right-of-way on here?
Yes.
It must be, but, so I'll find it, but.
If you look at the, at the end of Snow Lane, you'll see.
That is the line, okay. You know, it's amazing. There's a significant amount of current existing development which is on the right-of-way, the state right-of-way, which I find is, you know, surprising.
Perhaps that's why they want to look at our property so closely.
Yeah, well, one of the things you have to understand is, the state right-of-way is what, 80 feet, right?
60, 60 feet.
So 60 feet wide. The paved surface is not even close to that, so people do what they do. So there's mailboxes, fence, plantings, you know, all up and down Route 28. Here, because we brought it to their attention, they're taking it back.
And you already have essentially approval for the sidewalks, though?
We didn't want to do a sidewalk. That was, we were directed by DOT to put a sidewalk in.
Madam Chair, that's terrific.
If I can kindly answer the bullet points.
Yes, please go ahead, yes.
So with respect to the dedicated parking, our intent was to assign at least one or perhaps two of these spaces for dedicated takeout service. And one thing in our architectural design is, we actually have a takeout window. So that's gonna, that's intended to be an exterior queue to allow people to come pick up their sandwiches, so they don't really have to spend a lot of time going to the interior. So we're trying to separate those two functions of the restaurant. And with respect to our bike racks, we had proposed possibly something in the area, either right here at the corner, but I don't think that's gonna work well with our queue, but back in this area here. I don't know if we want to, we're having table service on this side, so we really don't want to have any bike racks over here for your, for your prior comment. But we're looking at the west side of the building, seems to be, it's probably gonna be a lower-traffic area, so probably an area perfect for bike racks. With respect to the trash, we're intending to have table service, so I can't imagine customers are going to be removing their own trash. So the intent of the restaurant is to have full table service outside, and that would also speak to the service island. We're intending to have, along the front of the building here, they would be the seasonal, the seasonal areas for the service island that would have all of the amenities that the server people would. that would have all of the, um, amenities that the server people would need. Um, but it's going to be a full table service to the outside.
Mm-huh.
Um, with respect to the sidewalks, um, I'm not sure if you're referring to the connections here, clearly not to this, but this, um, this pavement area here, this hardscape circumnavigates the, um, the three sides of the building. So the, all of those sidewalks are connected. We have our accessible, um, curb cut through here, but we also have these, um, these alleys, if you will, for pedestrian traffic coming in from the sides that are sloping to the central, um, to the central entry point here, but they can also come in either side here. So we're going to grade that, um, as flat as we can on the sides, but clearly this is our accessible route, um, currently planned. With respect to the opening to CVS, there is an existing sidewalk here. Um, I don't think we have a, an issue with striping that as a, as a crosswalk or keeping it as.
That's what I mean, so.
It's already following.
Right. So if we need to bolster that, um, but I, we have no plans of removing it, I guess, is.
No. Well, I think the striping, um, plan, you know, ought to show, um, what I described, you know, the six-foot red stripe wouldn't, framed in white on each side, um, that to the extent that there's room, um, that there, uh, the area is actually on the plan.
Well, what?
My point was that on the east and west exits where there is a sidewalk going to be put in.
Right.
That you have, uh, the same style of, uh, crosswalk identification painted red framed in white.
Right. You had added that as a comment. So, um, clearly, and I think Mr. Clark answered that properly.
Yeah, if it's not your approval, I would strongly recommend it being requested of DOT.
Sure. Um, and I believe that's, I believe that hits all your bulleted points.
All right. No other questions?
Right. Okay.
Right there.
Okay. Um, so it's, it's a good plan. Um, most of my comments have to do with, um, resolving clarifications. And I think that it, uh, some simple follow-up will resolve many of those things. Let me go through a couple of questions here. Um, when we see a restaurant plan that has outdoor seating, um, we typically get the ins- indoor seating arrangement and understanding how that's all going to work during the summertime and wintertime. Um, if you have, uh, fourteen tables on the outside, four tops, those, that's fifty-six seats. Does that mean forty-five seats on the inside? And how is that all arranged? And what happens during the wintertime when perhaps you shut down the fifty-six outside seats?
So as, as proposed, the, um, the inside seats, we had thirty interior seats, um, in the dining area, we have fifteen along our bar. In the lion's share, to your point, the lion's here is the, um, the outside seating. Um, the one thing that we, um, that we took a very close look at this is all of the seating, whether it be indoor or outdoor, is covered in our parking, inclusive of our employees. So we, we, we took the, the, the spirit of your zoning by law to heart.
No, I, I understand that. My, my question is, when you shut down the outdoor seating, which I'm assuming during the wintertime you will, you, this is all year-round restaurant, correct?
Yep.
Does the interior seating change?
No, no.
All right. So that's something that I think would be important to clarify.
It's, it's actually on our architectural plans.
Okay. Um, I saw no seating on your architectural plans. That's the reason why I'm asking the question.
That, that's fair because the, the full site plan review haven't had to do with the site and not the interior, but you have seen that prior and that has not changed.
Right. So I would just include that just so that we can, you know, finalize that. Again, this, mo- most of my questions are going to run down the same pathway in here. I think that you're going to be able to resolve them all. It's just that it's important that we clarify them for this approval. Um, I, I do, uh, agree with, I think, Ryan's point that brought up about green space and Charlene's. Um, this is a GB three. It's, it calls for a forty percent green, green area. Now, I understand this is pre-existing, but I think it would be, um, helpful if you could do as much as possible to improve some of the green area. And, um, if the shared, we're going to be proposing as a planning board, shared parking, linked parking as part of the neighborhood centers. The West Chatham Neighborhood Center has that concept. We're going to be promoting that as part of, uh, future developments on this. So this is something that is going to be, uh, promoted as we move into the, uh, village centers too. So it'd be important for you to perhaps, um, uh, welcome it. Try to get the shared parking to work a little bit, reduce some of your spaces and put gre- more green in. Uh, absent that, I would suggest that you only have fourteen tables on the outside. There's an awful lot of hardscape there that has no tables. So change some of that hardscape to some green space, green, uh, green surfaces. Um, I'm not directing you what you should do. I'm just suggesting that that area there could have alternative type surfaces so that you, um, can, you know, expand what is proposed right now. Cause all you're showing right now is about thirty-six hundred square feet.
Well, well, in, with due respect, um, our architectural site plan shows this whole area is all green.
I know. It's, it's a very small strip. Yeah. I'm just, I'm suggesting that you consider, uh, growing that area.
Well, the, the dining, the outside dining space, um, in addition to the exterior queue.
Yeah.
For our takeout, um, and you also have mill about space while people are waiting.
Yeah.
So what we wanted to do, we were more, um, we were more interested in keeping our patrons safe and not milling about parking lots. Um, so I, I think, I think to replace that hardscape, because we, we did plan this very, very carefully around safety. I think if we were to replace that with green space, granted it's better for the environment, but I also think a forty-six percent increase over existing is also, um, doing our due diligence towards that. Yeah.
And I think you have to understand, you know, we're treating this outdoor space like it's a restaurant. And so the servers and the waitstaff and the busboys and the barbacks, they need room to work without bumping into the patrons.
For further safety too.
So I think that, uh, I appreciate the concern, but.
We've seen these outdoor spaces before and we've seen the combination of both green and hardscape. So all I'm suggesting is, is take another look at it. Okay?
Sure.
Um, you can grow your small little strip that you have in there and just reduce a little bit of it. Cause again, you have an awful lot of hardscape area there and not all this occupied by tables. Uh, and I also want to confirm that those are going to be just fourteen four-top tables. It's not going to change to a six-top table after approval, correct?
There's no plan for that.
Okay. So that, that'll be something we would clarify as part of the conditions.
Right. And then I'll, I'll, I'll further, um, Mr. Riley's comment with respect to the room for the, um, for the staff to walk around from table to table. We also have an accessible route that we need to maintain as well. Um, so the, the greater, the greater the, um, surface area that we can accommodate that, um, these, these tables, even though in plan, they're dynamic, you know, they're not, they're not intended to be dynamic, but they are dynamic, right? So we want to make sure that we have ample coverage for all persons with accessible means, um, to traverse through our whole, our area.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for David on the stormwater. Um, stormwater is, is, uh, more than adequate. Um, I think there is some clarification you need to do in your narrative on it because it's not necessarily clear to anybody who actually would pick this up and just look at this in passing. Um, you, um, you defined in your existing condition, the amount of square footage that you use in your modeling on this. And it ends up being, you know, the point six oh six acres. All right. But you haven't used that same methodology in the proposed. Now, I, I think I've chased it all down, but it's not clear. And I, and I think it would be helpful if your narrative clarified that. So you have three proposed drainage areas there.
Yep.
Two of them, it appears what you're doing, drainage area one and two, those are being reviewed, viewed as, uh, duplicates of each other.
Yep.
I understand that. And then the third area in, in the rear is where you have a single, uh, infiltration structure in there.
Yep.
You're still short four thousand square feet though.
That's the building. That's the building.
So. No, it's, the building is nineteen hundred and tw- nineteen hundred and twenty square feet.
It's the building and the patio. The building.
You're still, you're still four thousand short. Now, my guess is that's your landscaped area there. I'm not, I'm not objecting to what your assumptions are. I think it just needs to be clarified in the narrative, the basis of what you're using for your proposed modeling. Okay?
Sure.
The other thing that you have, and I think it's just a typo, in your stormwater report, on page, let me get the right page. This is, on page five, drainage calculations. You, um, correctly identify that your, um, drainage area three is point two four CFS, but in the narrative statement below it, you say twenty, twenty-four CFS.
Okay.
Just as, it's a typo error, but it's, it's an important one because there's a decimal point missing there associated with that. I agree with, uh, Mr. Dubis on the trench drains. I think though, in your application, that way you're proposing here, this is a, a very good approach from the standpoint. Um, I think there's a couple of things that I think you should do to, uh, just make sure that the trench drains aren't going to be a, a nuisance in that, uh, cause I'm not sure about the exact details of what you're proposing. Um, there's all sorts of different slots that are being used by manufacturers on, on the trench drains. Uh, I think it's important that these aren't so narrow that you're going to have everything clogging up on top because that'd be a real maintenance issue. I think it's, uh, important for you to look into the type of, uh, slots that you're having on there. Make sure they're adequate enough so that's more closely to what a catch basin would be, if you could, rather than just, uh, cause some of these can be very narrow and they're going to be nothing but a maintenance issue on them. But I, I do think that the particular type that you're proposing here is very good. It's a, it's a, it's a large care capacity. It's not an issue with care and capacity and, and receiving of it. Um, also, it's probably a good idea if these are bolt down because a lot of times these trench drain covers can be moving around. I don't know what capacity these are or however they are, but it might be helpful if these were bolt down.
They're not bolt down.
They're not?
They, they, they don't make, they're not manufactured that way. They only, they only.
Some, some products are manufactured with bolt down.
Yeah, those are the residential ones that are very small.
Okay.
But the only, DOT are the only agency that requires bolt down.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's because of the speed of traffic.
Yeah.
Um, we're, we're at, um, maneuvering speed here. Uh, it's so, uh, it's not an issue.
Yeah.
And these, the main, um, these are produced by Shore Manufacturing, uh.
I didn't see any details on their grates though. That, that was the only question.
Well, it should be on the plan. Um.
Well, you.
But they're, but they're.
Again, again, they're, they're an image, but they don't actually show you the specifics associated with the slides. That's all.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not going to make a real big issue on this. This, I'm leaving this to you to actually deal with, cause I, I think the other thing that you have to do is you say that the applicant is going to submit an O and M plan, um, plan on this?
Yep.
I think the, I, I think that needs to be submitted and that addresses this. Okay? Cause this is not your normal, uh, uh, O and M type piece. Um, I think that's it for the, for the stormwater. A couple of other things though. Um, oh, you have a detail in here, which is on sheet four of six of your plans. It's called a conductor boot. Is that, let me use for your drywells associated with your, uh.
Yes.
Downspouts?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I really didn't pick up on that at all. Cause it goes into a, a twelve by twelve by sixteen and I don't know where it goes to. So it, it was not quite clear that that was supposed to be for a drywall. That's what I assumed. I, again, it's clarifying point. It doesn't really change an awful lot, but it helps if that is clarified. You, you have a couple of different thicknesses on your pavement section in there in particular with, um, uh, and I understand that this is probably whether it's a, a.
Yes.
By mass DOT area.
Yep, mass DOT.
You, you refer to detail one and detail two, which have different cross-sections. I, I think it's important to clarify where each of these details apply. Okay? And I pretty much figured you, you, part of this is going to be DOT related paving and then the rest is site paving. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Certainly the contractor will know.
Clarify a note or something like that on where it is. Um, utilities, if you have sizes of proposed utilities on, what size water man you're going to do, if you have a fire protection line in addition to a domestic line, um, underground utilities, how many conduits are you proposing to go in there with? Uh, what's the sewer line? Uh, you, you should show your proposed sizes on your site plan.
Yeah, that's not up to us. That's up to the, the.
You have to know what it is before you build it, right?
No. The contractor knows, needs to know what it is. Because they, they'll take their direction from ever source. They'll take their direction from, uh, the gas company.
Oh, then, I don't know. Well, here's what I'll ask you to do. Then I want it all on in an as-built plan that after you're all done.
Okay.
That'd be fine. We need to have some documentation of what you actually build.
Okay.
Um, you have lots of different lighting fixtures in here. So I think you need to clarify which lighting fixtures are where. Um, on the ones that you actually have on poles, you have six different variations in your detail there. I don't know which one you're proposing to use as part of that. So you just need to clarify which one. I don't have any problem with any of them. It's just that it's not clear which one you're going to be using. In the outside dining area, I think the two fixtures, you, you need some probably, uh, dining area lighting. Um, besides just the two that are out in front, that's more for the vehicles traveling and not necessarily for the diners. So if there, it, I assume people are going to be out there maybe later at night during the warm weathers and that, it would be important to have some sort of a lighting fixture there for patrons.
Right. So to, to your, to your point, my apologies.
They have some on the building there, but again, that's a rather large dining patio area. You're not going to be able to illuminate everything from just the building.
We were proposing table, tabletop lighting, um, in that area. There should be enough illumination. Um, and I just realized that our, the, our previous submission had encircled the, um, the exterior lighting, the parking lot lighting is the, is the DSX LED is what we're proposing.
Okay. Again.
Yep. No, I get it. That, yep.
Um, and I think I just have, uh, one other thing. Oh, okay. So you, so you, the DOT told you where to put the sidewalk because the, the preliminary plans that they provided to the town showed the sidewalk against the curb. So they came back and moved that away from the curb?
I have no idea what they were proposing, uh, before.
The plan, the preliminary that they provided us.
Yeah.
Shows it adjacent to the curb, right next to the street. So I want to resolve that issue because.
It doesn't need to be resolved. This is where they told us to put it.
Yeah. Okay. Cause it's different than what they're showing here on their preliminary concept. All of the sidewalk they're showing, with the exception by the church, is all adjacent to the curb. On all, all sides of the road is what I'm saying. So it's a, this, it would be unusual for them to say to do something different here. And, and I would just want to add a clarification on that to make sure that that's exactly what we're supposed to have.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to dispute that. I'm just saying that the plans that we are shown are in a different location.
How old are those plans?
Um, Ryan, can you give me an idea when, when we received this plan?
Yes. So, um, the concept that I forwarded to you that was provided by the DPW director represents, um, their ongoing twenty-five percent design plans submitted to Mastod. And I think it's important to note that twenty-five percent design stage means a lot can change over the course of this project.
Right.
The board and the applicant may want to just be mindful that any significant realignment, reconfiguration may require a minor modification or any minor changes could, um, you know, be captured in an as-built. But, you know, to say that this is, uh, full design by Mastod, I think is, it's not quite accurate.
Okay. All right. All right. All right. So I'm relying on that information that you received from Mastod said that you're showing it in the location that they're signing off on. Okay?
Yeah, well, we can't get a permit.
The only reason why I'm bringing it up to you is the concept plan that they showed us is different.
Well, they won't give us an access permit until we satisfy all their conditions. So like I said before, they're in receipt of these plans. They've had them for four weeks. I expect something from them in the next week or two to keep things moving on there.
Okay. And then one last comment. You're showing different types of grasses adjacent to each of the entrance and exit ways. Those grasses, when I checked into them, they can go anywhere between two and a half to five feet tall. I think you need to revisit those grasses at some of the entrance ways there because at five feet tall, and if you're only trimming them in March and April, they're going to be an obstruction from a site standpoint. So you might want to readjust some of the plantings at those entrances.
Well, they're on the property. They're not out in the street layout. So the line of sites aren't impacted at all.
Well, these things are going to... You know, grasses will go crazy.
But you won't be stopping 15 feet short of the intersection to make your decision whether you're going out on the 28 or not. You're going to be pulling up so your nose is even with the sidewalk. So those grasses are going to be behind you.
I'll put it to the rest of the board. Do you normally see grasses that are five feet tall adjacent to a roadway as part of a normal site? Site design? I had not. I mean, typically I'll see some plantings, but not grasses that could grow. This is what I looked at and I checked out. These grasses will get up to five feet tall.
But we can certainly coordinate the actual planting, you know, to make sure that the shorter grasses are... And then, you know, I'm assuming that the partnership team will consider a rigorous maintenance program annually just to make sure because safety is going to be the number one concern. But we are quite far back from the road edge. So I don't think line of sight is going to be an issue.
I will just jump in and say that in early conversations across departments, the police department did state that that was their primary concern with the redevelopment here. So I think a condition stating that sightlines need to be protected would be reasonable in any sort of final approval.
That's a good question.
Great. Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah. And I think you should clearly mark here on the plans as well if you're going to note it that which entrances are in and out and which one is just an out. The other two entrances have no markings on it at all.
The plans call for signage on the east end as well. The state wanted a stop bar there. We show that. And in the... And the state wanted arrows for the one-way... The one-way exit. If you want.
Again, all the... I don't really have any objection to the plan. These are clarifications so that we all are on the same page of what you're building and how. That's all I have.
Bob Wirtschaft, yes.
So the architectural drawing of the building, is that the actual? Or is it... Has it complied with the new stretch code so that we're going to have that much glass?
Yes. So it's all energy... It's all energy glass.
Okay. How are you heating this and cooling this? Is it going to... Is it an existing system? Are you going to put heat pumps in?
No, it'll be a new system. We haven't really value engineered whether we're going to go heat pump or whether they're going to go air handler.
I just... I don't see any mechanicals on the drawing and I...
Well, it's... Well, there is... There is space for mechanical units, for condenser units in the back of the building that's on the site plan and also the architectural plan. And they're intended to be placeholders.
Okay.
And it's behind the fence area near the refuse area.
So it'll be in the back. It won't be on the building?
That is correct. Yeah, that's not... No, that's... It won't be on the building.
Okay. That's pretty much what I was concerned.
Any other comments or questions? Bob Dubus.
Let me lighten the load here a little bit. It's getting kind of tense. I want to comment you on your sign. That is the best thing going, all right? Other than the shabahoy, this is a great sign. I grew up with this sign. It's got a little different name to it and a color to it, but it's an awesome damn sign.
They're the ones that are paying all the bills, so we want to reuse it.
Okay. So I'm gonna... A lot of points were brought up. I just want to clarify if board members bringing up points feel the need to include certain requests as requirements. There's a difference between a request and a requirement that we need to add in the statement of conditions. I think Ryan has suggested that we add a condition about maintaining clearer vision in the sightlines. And I'm just going to ask primarily Warren and Art if any of your points were not adequately responded to by the applicant and that you would feel the need to add it as a condition in our statement of conditions in order to approve the site plan that's been presented to us tonight.
Most of these are clarifications. If the applicant and their consultants will agree that they will address these as part of the final submission, I'd be happy to avoid all the long conditions associated with this.
I will.
I don't have any objection to the plan and I don't have anything that is a showstopper here.
No, we know that.
But, you know, I'm looking at, you know, like when somebody says 25... 4 CFS instead of .24. It's a typo, but it's an important one.
It's a detailed thing. You did mention that your detail art individuals... I have two engineering degrees.
But if somebody saw that later on and they said, "Oh, gee, allowing 25 CFS is what was designed for the site." That's not true. It wasn't. And I think it's important because later on, this document gets looked at by others. And so I'm not interested in overconditioning it. I think the sightline issue is probably the most important one. It's a safety issue. But the rest of them are just clarifications.
Great. And Warren, did you...
Chairman, I do feel strongly that as a safety matter that the striping that's done at the chatter market across the entry and the crosspiece between the chatter market and the proposed thing ought to be replicated on the east and west exits unless prohibited by Mass DOT. Can't imagine why they would because it's such an obvious safety feature.
So unless prohibited, I'm going to ask for the applicant to respond to that because I don't... I think what I heard from you is it's... Is it's actually DOT's call? Yeah. So I don't know that we can properly say that. I agree with... It's not that I disagree with your request.
I began by saying I don't know how to say it. I'm just saying I think it's important and Mass DOT may not have thought about it.
Right. Okay. I don't think we can properly include that. Yeah, as a condition.
We don't know of any commercial sites on Route 28 that have that. But the one thing we don't want to do is get hung up on trying to get a response from them if they don't want to give us a response. So we'd be happy to accept the condition that we send them a written request to be able to do it.
I can see it conflicting with the cross... With the stop bar that's on the east exit. That stop bar diagonally goes from one side of the crosswalk to the other at that end. So we'll have conflicting striping at that point.
If I could make a comment?
Yes, please, Ryan. Go ahead.
So the town is working closely through the DPW on this intersection realignment. Safety is the primary reason for looking at this intersection and making improvements. And I would suggest that the comments that Mr. Chain is making be directed through our DPW director to Mastod as part of that conversation.
Great. I think that sounds like a wise course of action and more proper. So we'll do that. Any other issues? So we'll add the condition to our standard conditions. We'll add the condition about maintaining the vision of the sightlines, ensuring that the sightlines are clear at both the westerly and easterly ingress and egress. Correct? Charlene, did you have a point?
Just something that Arthur said on the as-built plan, including the utility sizes.
Okay. And yes, so we'll add that as a condition that the as-built be submitted with full information on utility sizes and complete information on the built conditions. Yes. And any other conditions that we need to add to our standard three conditions?
Just to make sure that you do put a bike rack in. That's all. It don't have to be a condition. Just asking if you would make sure.
All right.
Yeah, put it right there.
Good. All right. Great. Then, yes, Ryan, yes.
I don't know if the board wants to discuss whether to bond any of these site improvements. There hasn't been a cost estimate provided for the cost of the improvements, but typically of a project of this scale, you would consider some sort of bond.
All right. Great. Do you have a cost estimate of the site improvements available, even if you haven't submitted it?
It's in your application.
It is. Okay. Can you point it out to us? Or put it on the screen?
My apologies. It's actually on page... It's on page four. And you'll notice our conservation efforts, we're printing the backside of cover stock to try to...
I did notice that. Okay. So you have an estimated cost for... So is this... This is for total site plan improvements? Is $500,000?
Right. That's our intent. We have no control of costs, as the board is well aware, but we're attempting to.
Paving drainage... Paving drainage sidewalks, handicap access, refuge, storage and disposal facilities, retaining walls, outdoor lighting and landscaping. All right. Do I have a... I'm going to consult Mr. Dubus, who usually helps, is very helpful in giving us some guidelines.
I don't suppose they want to put a 10% bond up because that's a little expensive. I would... And I didn't... I didn't see the...
It's within reason. So 10% would be $50,000.
I would say that would be a fair bond.
$50,000. Yeah. That seems reasonable to me as well.
As the project goes, they could come back. Right.
Yes. So we would add the condition of a $50,000 performance bond. Is the applicant agreeable to that?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Great. So... Yes. I would ask now for a motion to approve with the conditions added to our three standard conditions as stated, including the performance bond of $50,000.
Madam Chair, I would move that approval for 8:59 Main Street.
Thank you. May I have a second to that motion?
All right, second.
All right. We'll do a vote. Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Art Sprouse.
Art Sprouse, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Charlene Greenhouse.
Charlene Greenhouse, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And this is Catherine Hopper. I also approve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your complete submission. We appreciate the completion of your submission.
And your input as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Great. Do we need to take a short break? Yes. So as long as it's all right with everyone, let's take a five-minute break because it's been rather long. So we'll reconvene at... Well, let's take a six-minute break. So we'll reconvene at 6:45. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. We just had a short six-minute break. This is a continuation of the November 13, 2023, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And we will go on to our next agenda item, which is the West Chatham Neighborhood Center Information and Listening Session and Request for Public Comment. I'm just gonna start out with a couple of comments before we begin board discussion. Just remind you what our planner, Ryan Christianberry, brought out in her planner's report, that progress, that they're making progress with refining the language for the Inclusionary Section of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw, also working with town council to perfect the language regarding year-round occupancy, year-round occupancy of the residential units that are created. And I think there's really good progress that's being made there, and so we're looking forward to having those issues resolved, those pieces of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center bylaw, resolved by our next meeting. I just also, from my side, wanted to mention, when Ryan and I met this afternoon, we took a quick look at some of the preliminary feedbacks that we've had from our initial information and listening sessions, both at, I wasn't able to attend all of these sessions, but at the community center, which was open to the public, also the meeting with the Zoning Board of Appeals, which happened during the last week of October, some of the initial feedback. Based on that, I just want to comment that we're gonna take a closer look at this again in our next meeting, and then certainly the December 11 meeting is our target date for some decision-making about this bylaw. But it does seem to me that even though we've done a lot of public outreach in the course of putting this proposed bylaw amendment together, I mean, we have been working on it since 2015, so there's been a lot of time, a lot of iterations of the bylaw, we've added layers to it, with the help often of professional consultants, Cape Cod Commission added a layer, met with us and added a layer in 2017 of the design standards. And then, as you know, we also worked with them again to add the layer of the Form-Based Code. So we've had a lot of professional input, a lot of different iterations. But to get to the point, it does seem to me that even though we've done public outreach at each stage, that it may be the case now that a lot more information and education is needed. And so let's take a closer look at it over the next two meetings, but I will ask the board to consider, to consider this point carefully, because this is, this does need to be a community-driven bylaw, and it needs to be understood clearly by the community as well as other committees and boards in town, understood clearly. We may want to pursue creating visuals and more build-out, build-out numbers and build-out visuals that will help the public and, and other committees and boards in town really see what this is all about. So we've already talked about planning for some of those materials to be developed, but I just wanted to mention that to the board, that we want to consider whether the bylaw is clearly understood and how much education is needed and address that issue. So with that being said, I'm gonna ask if there's any comments from the board on where we're standing, anything that I've brought up or that Ryan's brought up. Yes, Charlene?
I just, the packet included some information.
Oh, yes.
That Rick Levitt provided.
Yes.
I just want to thank him profusely. I thought his, it's not really a memo, it's more of a, just an informational piece, was point-on, in my opinion. And I'm very grateful for him to do that. The creative approaches to moderate density, filling the missing middle of Cape Cod, public presentations. I've sat in on a number of similar presentations that have been so extremely helpful. So if, you know, if something like this can, can happen sooner rather than later here in town, I think showing modeling through, there's so many different programs available to show modeling of how, how this really could be looking, or how it could look in the future. And, and I do, my husband's in the audience, and I actually had him read this, this, that Rick put together, and he looked at me, and he's by no stretch of the imagination a planner, believe you me. And he goes, "Well, if people thought the way they did, we wouldn't have the old village." Because of the density and the, I mean, he was born and raised here in Chatham.
Right.
You know, 72 years young, he's been here a very long time, and he has seen the changes that have occurred in this community. And he just, the first thing he said was, "Well, then we wouldn't have the old village."
Right.
So density is not a bad thing.
Correct. Yes.
And I think we need to get people to better understand what we mean by that. We've got some, you know, 10,000-square-foot, single-family dwellings in this community that could easily be between 10, you know, the four and 10 or more apartments.
Correct.
And it would look exactly the same as some of these single-family homes we see. So, you know, when people are talking about density, it, I just, it's like a toothache for me.
There's a, there's a, I guess I'd have to use the word "almost fear" associated with the word density, but, but I think you're absolutely right. I would agree with you that what we're proposing, especially with the Form-Based Code, is an aesthetically pleasing implementation of something that's somewhat higher density that can help to provide housing, a diversity of housing options, as well as commercial units for livelihoods, for year-round residents for the Town of Chatham. And that's what we're looking to achieve, and also to create that village atmosphere that's walkable, that's a neighborhood where people can live and work and pick up a few, you know, things they need at a shop, just all in that area that's pedestrian-friendly. So I do think that, you know, as I said, it's possible that more education is needed and that we need more materials to do that, and we want to look at developing those visuals and so on. So, any other board comments? And Rick, if, if you'd like to present what you've sent to the board, otherwise, I'd be happy to read it, but since you're here, it might be better that you present it.
Well, thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Rick Levitt. My experience has been that presenting visuals, particularly at town meeting, but also at your public hearing, will help people to understand what, what you're asking them to vote for. It's been, I think you're familiar, Catherine, with, we did it, when we did the roadway, we had to, we showed visuals at town meeting. It made a difference. So I'm really encouraged by your comments, and thank you very much. I hope you will go ahead with it. Union Studio particularly, they're, they demystify, they demystify density. I'm sure most of you are aware of Len Sessman, who was a selectman here years ago. He's an architect and was confronted at the time, the whole board was, with this whole issue of density. And Len simply said, "Density is not a dirty word." It's not, and it can be demystified. So I encourage you to do that, and it will pay, it'll pay great dividends. I had some comments to make, I'm gonna reserve them until your, your next session is going to have a more detailed discussion. I'll, I'll make those comments then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I think we'll have more information on what Ryan and Gloria are working on to refine the, the final pieces that were open issues in the bylaw, in terms of the language in the Inclusionary Section, and to address the, the question of year-round occupancy. So I think we will be able to go into it in greater detail. And it does, it does look to be a successful conclusion, so I think that's very hopeful. Any other comments from the board? And do we have any members of the public who would like to ask questions or make comments? I do see a hand raised, and I'll ask Annie to.
Just a guest.
Okay. So, guest, if you could identify yourself, and please go ahead.
Yes, it's Lane Gibbs.
Hi, Lane.
Thank you. I'm, I'm only gonna address one point and make a few comments, and maybe you can address it for me. I had written, Ryan, and I haven't gotten a response. When I first looked at the packet, the only thing I saw regarding this particular topic was this document, which looked very official. I assumed it was written by a staff member or a committee member or somebody in official, you know, a consultant, until I read the first paragraph, and it was from Rick Levitt. And just to read a small point of it, he said, "We had a taste at the last outreach program last Saturday, what to expect from a small activist group of critics of the West Chatham development. The critics' comments Saturday were intended to affect voters' attitude and scuttle passage of this important zoning bylaw. I've had years of experience with this activist group's exaggerated fears and false claims, and share my experiences in this paper." Now, I have a problem with, number one, this being in the packet. I would disagree with one of the board members there. I have written many things with many questions and comments, never have they appeared in the packet, nor are they even mentioned in your minutes. And I asked why this particular memo was put in there, because Mr. Levitt is neither a staff member or a committee member, and yet it was put in there, and it is characterizing anybody who disagrees with this plan as being a small minority of activists that are trying to fear, scare people. That is absolutely untrue. We have very legitimate concerns, and it is not a small activist group, it is individual people who have been following this for three years. And I take great exception. If you want to win the public over, you should not be posting something like this where it characterizes anyone who has legitimate concerns about the density and about what is going to happen in that corridor as being some kind of underground activist group. I mean, it's insulting, and it's divisive, and it's totally unnecessary, and I still haven't had my questions answered. I found out that, once again, we've been told that traffic studies and density studies were done in terms of water and sewer, but it turns out they were done prior to this plan. And so I think that's a legitimate concern. You are increasing density, you have said you're increasing density, that those numbers or, or the water and sewer was appropriate for four units per acre. Well, that's not what this is gonna be. And I am, I expect that you should have a traffic study done, and you should have water and sewer analysis done to determine whether or not, on the proposed increased density that is gonna occur over the next 10 to 15 years, is going to be able to handle our water and sewer capacity. Right now, we don't have it. You know, there, there have to be discussions with water and sewer. You know, if, if PFAS show up, there is not gonna be enough water. It took three years from the date that PFAS were found in wells five and eight for them to test the waters, they had to shut them down, they, it cost about $30 million, and they're not gonna be up and operational until next, at the end of next summer or the fall. And so we are without those wells. If PFAS show up in 10 and 11, none of our other wells have the ability to process and to filtrate PFAS. These are really very real concerns, and that's our drinking water. So for you to go forward and then in, in any way marginalize people who have serious concerns about not only the cost, but the time it will take for us to have the infrastructure for the sewer, for that increased density, but more importantly, drinking water, I think is inappropriate. So those are my only comments, and again, I would like to know why this was put in the packet when nothing has ever appeared in the packet from anybody who, who has concerns. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Elaine. I'll respond, I'd like to respond to a couple of your questions. I mean, firstly, to my memory, I do remember, we have a, we have a procedure similar to when we conduct a public hearing. We ask people to submit their comments, either pro or con, in writing, or we have the ability that if you attend the meeting, if you're connected to the meeting, we do ask for public comment. And people are entitled to any opinion, either pro or con. I believe Mr. Levitt submitted his comments in writing to the Community Development Department, and therefore they are included in our packet, and that's just standard procedure. I do, excuse me, Elaine, excuse me, Elaine, I have the floor. I recall many instances where your comments, as well as others, were also included in the packet because you submitted them in writing, which is our standard procedure prior to the meeting. And then in that case, they, they are included in the packet, and if the person submitting the comments is not present at the meeting, the chair will read them to the public. And that's our, that's our standard procedure for public hearings, and we've adopted that similar procedure for these community outreach sessions. So that's the reason why Mr. Levitt's comments were in the packet. He's also free to have his opinions. It's not necessarily the opinion of the board or staff, just as you are free to have your opinions and also to express those either in writing. If they're received in writing prior to the meeting, they would be included in the packet if far enough in advance, and if you're not present at the meeting to express your opinions, the chair has agreed to read those comments. And Mr. Levitt is here tonight, I was prepared to read his comments, but he preferred to make those comments in person. So that's just a standard procedure regarding your comments. We have addressed your comments about the infrastructure analysis that was done, as you say, based on four units per acre, which was the proposed density in the 2014 final report from the Cape Cod Commission, from the Route 28 Visioning Study. The Planning Board is now proposing to increase that baseline density to five units per acre. We will be pursuing additional comments to analyze that slight increase vis-à-vis water and sewer. And as I've mentioned earlier this evening, we are looking at getting further documentations for a more specific build-out analysis and even visuals to show specific build-outs. So we're working on all those issues, and I thank you for bringing them up. Any other comments, or, Ryan, did you want to add anything?
I did just want to note the minutes that you approved tonight are very detailed in terms of all of the public comments you've received to date, including those of Ms. Gibbs.
Okay, thank you very much. So again, in that context, they were included, and we do appreciate it. All right, let's see, are there, are there anyone else?
Public forum where we can speak? I, you were gonna have Mr. Levitt read a 99-page document.
I'm sorry, Elaine, you haven't been recognized, I do need to interject here.
Okay.
He did not read that document, that was not what was proposed.
Actually, you just, you could read it if you wanted to, and it's 99 pages long.
Okay.
So I'm going on record saying that, and mine have never been. never been in any minutes, and they have never been in any packet. I'm just going on record saying that. I've been communicating with Ryan. Everybody has deferred it. They said, "We'll get back to you, we'll get back to you." And nothing has appeared.
Ms. Gibbs, could you please look at this week's minutes and make that statement again?
Yeah. And actually, it's our, it's, it is our procedure that all communication should be in the open forum. We actually, you know, would discourage communication directly with Community Department, Development Department staff, and we would want you to bring your comments to the open meeting with the full board. And the procedure for doing that is, you know, to either be present at the meeting. When recognized by the chair, you may express your opinions, or if submitted in writing well in, in advance, in sufficient time advance, to be included in the packet, your comments would be included in writing in the packet. And I, we have done that on many occasions for you, Ms. Gibbs, and for others. And as Mr. Wurchafter has pointed out, even in tonight's minutes from the October 23 meeting, your comments are included in detail in the minutes as drafted and approved. So that's the procedure, and we'll just ask you to keep following that procedure. And again, the public is entitled, you're entitled to disagree, you're entitled to express opinions either for or against. It does not necessarily express the opinion of the board or the chair or of Community Development Department staff. It is an open forum, and so that's, so we do adopt just these very simple sort of neutral, if I could call them neutral, procedures of submitting your comments in writing in advance or being present and recognized by the chair. So with that being said, are there any other members of the public who have comments for this evening? Any other comments from the board? All right, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Chairman's comments, Chairperson's comments. My only comment tonight is that we have received a note from Megan Story, that she will, due to the weight of her other responsibilities in her job, that she will need to step down from the Planning Board. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge Megan's contribution, to thank her for her service, to tell her how much, and to let the public know how much we appreciated her stepping up to be part of the Planning Board. There is a formal procedure, as you know, Planning Board members are appointed by Select Board, so there's a formal procedure that now will be begun to find another Planning Board member, but I did want to let you know that Megan will be stepping down, and we did want to just thank Megan for everything she's done and let her know that we'll miss her. And that's it. Any other comments from the board, or Ryan, do you have anything to add before I ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Actually, Catherine, I did want to just note that at the community forum on the 28th, there were some technical difficulties.
Oh, correct, yes.
And so the detailed minutes of that meeting, as well as the presentation I deliver, will be posted to the town's website, the Planning Board's website.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, and I'd like to encourage board members on that note. On the other hand, the video, the recording of the meeting with the ZBA is available on Chatham TV, so I'd like to encourage all of you to watch that video. Okay, great, thank you. And then we'll get caught up when the summary of the October 28 meeting is posted on the website. It's, I wasn't able to attend. I think Warren was there, Arthur was there, Ryan, Katie Donovan, and Jill, our town manager, all were in attendance, but it'd be good to review that and get caught up on that. All right, so if there are no other comments, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter approve.
Art Spur approve.
Warren Chang.
Warren Chang approve.
Charlene Greenholtch.
Charlene Greenholtch approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus approve.
And this is Catherine Hopper, and I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. Let's note the time as 7:10 in the evening. Thank you, everyone, for participating, and please enjoy the rest of the meeting, the rest of the evening, excuse me.